We will now reconvene the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Vega.
Voila.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Ball.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Present. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, City Manager. There's no reportable action.
Thank you for that. We had no presentations elsewhere, and a last-minute addition to current presentation is a proclamation for DMV and Donate Life California Month, and I don't believe we have anybody here to receive it, but I will, I will read it. It's an important issue. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, more than 106,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities, also a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, and donations of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others. And whereas organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives last year, the most ever, and any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions, and being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifecalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.donavidacalifornia.org. And whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles, and California residents interested in saving lives through living kidney donations may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Lompoc, and encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards. And as I speak to this every year, I not only have checked that box, and it is now a permanent addition to my driver's license. I have had a family member that we lost that donated their organs, and all of them that were viable and repurposed and helped improve the lives of seven different individuals. So I am witness to that impact that it can make and encourage all to consider it. All right. City Manager, your report, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick update. In late March, we received notice from the Senate and the House that they were going to do direct appropriations for fiscal year 2023. So we had a pretty short notice, so I submitted on April 4th to them Pioneer Park based upon our, our submission for a grant for Prop 68, both to salute Carbo Hall's office and Diane Feinstein's office. It was about an $800,000 playground equipment and exercise equipment. We got noticed by both, and actually on April 14th, Geneva Mateliona from Diane Feinstein's office actually came out. She went to our state of the city. She also wanted to tour, tour the Pioneer Park, so we're able to show her that park, and hopefully we'll get some funding from it, from one of those two. So just want to let everybody know.
Thank you for that. Any questions for the City Manager? All right. We will move on to the next item, Consent Calendar. We will open the floor for comment on Consent Calendar. The number to call is 805-875-8201. If you'd like to speak to the item, please come to the podium. You have three minutes on Consent Calendar items.
Mayor, before we start public comment on the Consent Calendar, I needed to note one thing on item number two. The recommendation on that item, this is the ordinance regarding allowing the city to place limits on public access to city-owned properties. The recommendation on that item says for council to introduce that ordinance, but it should say for council to adopt that ordinance. So that's my one correction to the Consent Calendar. Also, we should note for the record, Councilmember Cordova, I believe, informed me that she's going to recuse herself from participating in item number four, the Visit Lompoc Annual Reports.
Okay.
And because it's on the Consent Calendar, she does not need to leave the room. Just note when she votes that she's recusing herself on that one.
Okay.
With that, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you for that update. Floor is now open for Consent Calendar.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. I wanted to speak on number two as well, placing limits on public access and use of city-owned and controlled properties. That wording seems very incorrect. The public owns all of it. Certainly, at times, for safety, you would need to limit access, but it's not city-owned. It's public-owned. It's all ours. We pay for everything. I think it should be reworded, and I think you should be very cautious about limiting access and controlling the access. On number three, I have heard recently that police departments in this country are also aligned with United Nations in case additional protection is necessary. They have different uniforms and different equipment, and I urge you to look into that if that is what this is about, if it's the United Nations portion of their protection. Number five, the nuisance and abatement order for weeds and debris. I don't think that should be on the Consent Calendar after having been to Ken Adams Park. I don't think you should expect the public to do things that the city is, we are paying for them to do, and they're not doing. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, did we have any written comments on Consent Calendar?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one call in, I will go ahead and read the process for Consent Calendar. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. And seeing no one call, we will close public comment on Consent Calendar and bring it back to council. Do I have any items that need to be pulled or questioned? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'd like to pull item four, please.
Okay. Councilmember Cordova.
On item six, I just have a couple of questions. I, I've noticed that on some reports that come from staff when it comes to appropriations and requests for funding, council will be provided cost, an actual estimated cost, or sometimes two or three, I guess bids, pricing for a specific line item, and it, it just makes me a little nervous when we just round and, and we say $200,000 for this and $200,000 for that. I looked at these items, and I felt that they were pretty large-ticket items and pretty important and impactful items, and I'm just not sure what the process is with regards to how you bring it to council and, and why it's so vague.
Yeah, it's a good question. I know this is just for the appropriations. I'm not really sure how to answer if it's going to go back to you guys for bid or not. I don't know what you, hang on, I can look.
I believe Mr. Berry is going to come to the microphone and attempt to provide some input.
We typically don't see these items come back to council once they've already been approved, and that's what always makes me uncomfortable, is that we request the appropriation from the council, but we give the council absolutely no information.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it would still go through the bid process, but go ahead, CJ.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The, the specific appropriations request, one for the wash trailer, is a bid item. We do have a bid from Altech Industries, and the other items, the medium voltage switchgear, are, are ongoing purchases, so the bids will go out as needed for procurement. These are items that fall well within our purchasing policy. This is merely addressing items that were not programmed into budgetary funding.
Right, understood. And so when we go out and we purchase such large items, I understand that you said we go, we do go through a bidding process. You said you have a bid from Altech?
That's correct.
Do you price compare with other companies? Do you accept other bids? Or do we just go with the one that we've always gone with or the one that, like one company?
Sure. There, the answer is yes. Generally speaking, when we have specialized equipment like this, we can go to multiple vendors. That is not always the case. In the particular case of this wash trailer, Altech is the vendor that provides it. So we utilize things such as the California Multiple Award Schedule, which is already a, a competitive bid process that allows us to piggyback onto those contracts and purchase equipment that has been previously competitively bid, as is the case with this Altech piece of equipment. For the, for the switches that were mentioned earlier, those are put out through the RFP process for multiple vendors to bid on.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions? All right, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Consent Calendar.
Except for item four?
Except for item four.
All right.
A second.
And we have a second. And no questions, let's vote. And that passes 5-0, and we'll revisit item four, just be, just after the last written communications. All right. There are no staff presentations, so we will now open the floor for general oral communications regarding city matters that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to a city matter that's not on the agenda, you have three minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201. The floor is open.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. I want to thank you for the flowers planted in the planters at the Y. Looks much better. I'm still seeing vaccination and vaccine on city buildings and, and spread around and, and people talking about that, and I think that people need to do some research and not encourage things that are known to be dangerous. Yesterday was the first day of Dr. Anthony Fauci's Military Tribunal at Guantanamo Bay. He's charged with mass medical malpractice and treason, as was the late Deborah Birx, also seditious conspiracy, murder, attempted murder, conspiracy to commit murder, bribery, money laundering, and falsifying government reports. An email chain between Fauci and Francis Collins, who also was previously executed, was presented in which they discussed murdering physicians and health officials who advocated for hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin, both very effective against the illness, and instead promoted deadly vaccines. An infectious disease expert at the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases testified via Zoom that Fauci told the witness on December 11th, 2020, not to take the vaccine because it causes cardiac arrest, infertility, miscarriages, and potentially causes AIDS. Hydroxychloroquine and zinc protect against snake venom. Recent research suggests that COVID-19 is not a virus. It is instead Cobra snake venom. The vaccines also have snake venom in them, which is why they cause the organ failure. Monoclonal antibodies, which were just banned by the government, are actually anti-venom treatment and have been very successful. It's beginning to seem like we're in Jonestown. The vaccines are the Kool-Aid, and our officials represent Jim Jones.
Did we have any written communications non-related to agenda?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one call in, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Our first item for the evening is number eight, Adoption of Resolution Number 6485, Princees 22, authorizing participation in a memorandum of understanding with the County of Santa Barbara and the Cities of Bueltown, Carpinteria, Galita, Santa Barbara, and Solvang to share the cost of the development and implementation of the Santa Barbara County Regional SB 1383 Food Recovery Plan. And we have the Solid Waste Superintendent Keith Quinnland to provide the presentation.
Yes, good evening, Council. Keith Quinnland, Solid Waste Superintendent, Solid Waste Division. Before you is the Food Recovery Plan to work in coordination with the County of Santa Barbara. This is one aspect of SB 1383, which is the Organics Recycling Law. There are many aspects of that law, including collection and recycling, procurement requirements, including purchase and use of recycled organic products, food recovery, capacity planning, enforcement, which includes inspecting and compliance, record-keeping requirements, reporting, and outreach and education. So this food recovery aspect, by 2024, we have to recover 20% of edible food, and we're going to be working with the county to try to make that happen. I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Cordova.
Okay, so I do have quite a few questions on this, on this agenda item. At first, I, I need clarification. When we discussed the initial information that was brought to council on March 1st, it was introduced along with the request for the council to accept ordinance number 169122, which the council did accept at that time, but it was introduced as requirements relating to organic waste disposal reduction. I, I, I then saw it come back on April 5th as, as just the cost of the development and implementation of the Santa Barbara County Regional SB 1383 Food Recovery Plan. So we referred to it through the staff report as the Food Recovery Plan. So are we just asking the council for acceptance into just that portion? Because when I went back and looked at the March 1st, and I went back and read the whole ordinance, and I highlighted all the areas and all the requirements and all the stipulations within the ordinance, it covered everything. So I'm a little confused as to, are we just carving out a section of that, and we're going with the county only for the Food Recovery Plan?
For this aspect, that is correct. And as I mentioned at the previous council meeting, we'll also be working with the county on an educational aspect as Lompoc Unified School District falls both within the boundaries of the city and in the unincorporated areas of the county. We're partnering with the county on that as well. So where there are synergies, we'll be working together on this program.
But educational for the purpose of just the Food Recovery Plan? Because the whole, you know, AB 180 or 1383 is large. It is large.
Yes, it is.
So I'm just curious to what extent, and I need clarification. I don't know if the rest of the council does, but I need, I feel like I need clarification as to what we're, we're working with the county on.
This is just for the Food Recovery aspect, the Food Recovery Plan aspect before you this evening.
Okay, so then with the ordinance that council adopted on March 15th, after the discussion on the March 1st meeting, that particular ordinance covered food recovery, and it, and it covered the areas that we see now in the Food Recovery Plan with the county. So what happens then to the ordinance that was accepted and adopted by council on March 15th?
Well, the ordinance still stands. The ordinance is a requirement of the law. One of the items they, they had out there, CalRecycle, is adoption of the ordinance in order to receive grant funding, as I mentioned at the previous meeting. And the city was awarded $56,000 in grant funding, which can assist in paying for working with the county. So the ordinance, as you said, it's massive, and it covers the entirety of the law. And the food recovery is one aspect of that found within the ordinance.
But the ordinance does not have to be updated or modified? Because the way I read the ordinance, it made it seem like we would be handling those things. And I, and I do have specific questions with regards to the actual Food Recovery Plan from the county that the county is proposing. So, so I'm just curious as to whether there's any kind of revision that needs to be made to our initial ordinance adopted by the council on March 15th.
It, it, the ordinance would be a living document and potentially would need to be updated as we build out 1383. So there may be modifications to the ordinance that will come back to council.
Okay, so I have some, then some specific questions that I'll go into with regards to the actual plan that the county is proposing. Essentially, and I think essentially for clarity, the county in this Food Recovery Plan, they're, the way I read it is they're going to be the coordinators and the paper pushers, meaning, I don't mean that any lightly. I mean that they will be handling a lot of the documentation the way I read it with regards to creating and making sure that the record-keeping, you know, they'll be assisting in those areas, and then they'll also be helping the cities or the jurisdictions coordinate with not just, well, they won't be coordinating with our actual food generators, but they'll be coordinating with the Food Recovery Organizations and agencies, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so with that, though, it, it does say that they won't be working with the food generators. And when I looked at the list of our food generators, we really only have literally one wholesaler in town, four grocery stores that would be part of this, three restaurants, one retail, and one specialty events. I guess my question then would be, do we need to be part of the county to do this when we have literally just a handful of, of businesses or organizations that would be considered food generators or food producers? Like, what is the, what is, I guess, the, the need for Lompoc to participate in this and give up funding?
With the, with the size of 1383 and the implementation that is in front of us, any assistance that we can get is helpful. So I would say, yes, partnering with the county is a good thing in this regard, and will allow our staff to focus on other areas of the law and implementation in those other areas.
When, when we consider the actual food recovery organizations and agencies that they've listed, I know that they've listed some VIP agencies, and I know that they've listed also some nonprofits, and, and they go on to different lists, but are we, is it, is it clear to, to assume that the food that is picked up in Lompoc will be picked up by local food recovery organizations? Or is the food going to be picked up outside of, and go outside of Lompoc?
I, I don't have an answer for that at this time. It's still being developed.
Because I think that, that to me determines whether the cost-sharing formula is adequate for us, for the city, and whether it's fair and whether it's, it's a good investment for Lompoc. Because if we've already identified that there's only literally four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, there's literally only 10, the makeup of total 10 for wholesalers, grocery stores, restaurants, and, and retail establishments that would have to participate in this, and I think when I saw the list of agencies that would be accepting the food, not including any nonprofits, it's only like two locations in Lompoc. So I just don't see the need for the investment if we literally can probably manage it internally ourselves. So unless I get that, unless staff is able to tell me, like, this is why it makes such a good investment, I just think that we have to still adopt, and we still have to finance, and we still have to back up the rest of AB 1383. So to me, to carve this out and have it be such a small portion, it doesn't make sense to me at all. I'm not seeing it anyway. So I, I don't know if, if there's a way for us to find out if these agencies that are going to be picking up, are they only specific, like, will food be picked up in Lompoc from these generators, from these food generators? And will it be distributed only to agencies in Lompoc? Or is it kind of cross-county and all of that stuff? I would want to know that. And then for the, for all the businesses, restaurants, and that fall under, fall outside of Tier 1 or Tier 2, because when I looked at Tier 1 and Tier 2 food generators, it talked about Tier 1 obviously being grocery stores, and then Tier 2 being grocery store supermarkets, and then Tier 2 being commercial establishments such as restaurants. But it's specific because it says 250 or more seats, hotels with onsite food facility and 200 or more rooms, health, so I don't, that's why we don't have a whole lot of people that fall into this. So everyone else that is underneath that, where do they fall?
I'm not certain of that at this time, Councilwoman. I'll have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay. All right. Any more questions for staff before we go to public comment? Councilmember Ball?
I'm not sure there's an easy answer for this, but should we decide not to go with the county's plan? Have we internally put a number on what, you know, this, these mandates, this list of things that we still have to do? Would, have we put a price tag on that? Do we have any idea of, you know, again, there's a lot to implement. There's a lot to make happen in a few years, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we have a number on it, but what it, what it will do is take staff's time away from current implementation and build out of the organics recycling. In addition to the 1383, we're still implementing, implementing what's called MCR, mandatory commercial recycling, expanding that program as per CalRecycle, and mandatory organics recycling, which was predated the 1383. So we're still implementing both of those in addition to the build-out of 1383, and the Solid Waste Division has limited staff to perform these functions.
Yeah, and I guess maybe to elaborate, is my question, is it, is, are we, is there a chance that by investing this $11,000 in a partnership with the county that in reality, maybe that cost would be much more inflated should we have to stand up the efforts to do that portion that the county would be helping us? Does that make sense?
Yes, and that is a potential. There is potential that this could cost us more if we were to do this on our own.
Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. CJ Berry, Utility Director. I just wanted to also offer a follow-up to your question, Councilmember Ball. Assigning a order of magnitude... Assigning a order of magnitude SB 1383 is a moving target at this point. It is such a massive piece of legislation that it's still being refined and implemented at the policy level by CalRecycle. So as we develop our rate models and as more and more information becomes refined about SB 1383 and the enforcement compliance requirements, those costs will become clearer. But to be able to sign a high-level order of magnitude cost as a result of this legislation right now is such a moving target. It's nearly impossible.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Councilmember Cordova?
I just want to make the statement too that we're, the calculation is based on population. And so when we look at that, we're going to be paying, I guess, per head, so to speak, to participate in this. But yet we have literally 10 establishments within our city limits that would be required to participate in this food recovery plan. And then I just want to point out that the MOU also states that MOU is, if the MOU is extended, this will only go through December of 2022. So the 11,000 will get us through December of 2022, from what I understand. And then it will be extended thereafter for a year or, and then will be billed also for any additional services at the end of that extended term. So there's no cost that they're disclosing as to what they'll charge us after that or once they develop their collateral or, I'm not saying it's a bad plan. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that staff does not know whether the food program is going to stay in Lompoc or not. And I'm uncomfortable with the fact that we are so okay with carving out just a small portion of it when in reality, the bigger chomp of it is everything else that we're going to have to do. Because it's such a minute amount of businesses that would have to participate in this.
All right, Councilmember Rega?
If I could ask a question about the, on the financial end, the $56,000 grant. How is that utilized or what is that going to? Is there any part of that going toward this 11,000 or is it going to another part of the ordinance?
It can go to expenses associated with 1383. It could go to replacement containers. It could go to the stickering or the advertising of the food waste or organics recycling within your green container. So there are different aspects the funding can go to, the grant funding can go to associated with the 1383 implementation.
So if you could clarify where the $11,000 is coming from one more time, please?
Yeah, within the staff report, it's coming from our recycle processing line item currently. Recycle processing is, you know, when our curbside blue container is picked up and the material is sorted, that's our recycle processing. So currently it's coming out of that funding line.
So the funding is there, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I, yes?
I just wanted to clarify one thing about the cap on the costs under this agreement. The agreement does end in December 2022. And it does say that it can be extended for another year. But the cap, the $11,000 amount plus 10% would still be a cap even if it got extended for another year unless we, the county and the city engage in negotiation to amend this MOU to increase that $11,000.
So if it exceeds the 10% expectation, it would come back to us anyway for the new negotiated rate that we would have to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Ball?
Just real quick, should, you know, hypothetically speaking, we go into this agreement with them. If it's a horrible fit, doesn't work out, do we have an out? And if so, when?
If you just give me one second, I can look at the termination provision and I can come back to you if you want to.
Yeah, no problem.
For one moment.
I think the main thing for me is that, you know, once we create a relationship, if it's not a good fit, it'd be great if we had an option to opt out. I'm just curious.
It looks like there's not the option for the city to end this at any time that the city wishes. So we would be, if we agree to this, we would be paying the $11,000 plus 10% if needed. And that would get us, and then the MOU would last until December 2022. We would not have the option to terminate it at any time.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Cordova?
And City Attorney? So for clarification, the MOU clearly states that we are going into this MOU for the purpose of developing a food regional program, a regional food program with the county. It's not for services.
That's my understanding, but that'd be more of a question for solid waste staff.
So I want to make sure that the council understands that too. It's not 11,000 and then that's going to pay for them to come out and get our food and make sure that we're, that's again, the way I view it. And I don't mean this in any bad way. They're coordinating and they're paper pushing for us. They're coordinating to the pickup look agencies. They're going to coordinate with them and they're going to assist in generating the collateral and the record keeping items for this portion of AB 1383. They're not going to, it doesn't cover anything else. This is for the food recovery only. This is such a small portion of it. So this is not yet, from my understanding, the actual action of actually picking up the food and delivering the food. And we don't know what those costs are yet, right? If there are some.
Yes, good evening. Your statement is absolutely correct. The participation in this endeavor is to develop the program, not implement it and not operate it.
Thank you, thank you. And so please, council, understand that.
Councilmember Ball?
So appreciate that. I think that's, at least for me, that seems to be a given. $11,000, as you know, that's not a lot of money. That's probably one-fifth, one-sixth of one person's salary at the county level. I'm not sure if it's a good fit overall. This, as staff mentioned, is a moving target. What I will say is the county is not perfect, but they're not the worst in that during the pandemic, it was county structures and their relationships with a lot of nonprofits that really stepped up, especially Santa Barbara Food Bank. We participated in taking boxes to seniors here. So that network is already developed there. And I'm just, I'm just wondering and I'm hopeful, and I don't expect a bunch of services. The city, we're going to have to figure out how to do a level of service that is necessary for this. But I don't think the county, this is a worthless investment. They do have the connections and the infrastructure put in place to help implement this. And I think for the cost at $11,000, it's, I personally don't think it's a bad deal.
Councilmember Cordova?
Understood, and I agree with that. I don't have a problem with the county at all. What I have a problem with is I don't care if it's a dollar that we are partnering with any agency or region with. If we don't have the answers as to what we're signing up for, even a dollar is too much for me.
All right, let's go to public comment. If you would like to speak to this issue, item number eight, you may call in at 805-875-8201. You may come to the podium and you have three minutes. Madam Clerk, did we have any written on this item?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. All right, we will give it the full 30-second delay that is required in order for our viewers of Tap TV or streaming or on KPEG, which for those of you, they're all streaming. You can even get KPEG online now. So anywhere in the world, you can listen to KPEG or anywhere in the world, you can stream our council meetings. So those links are on our city website. And that was some really exciting information I got to share last week at the State of the City. So I think we're getting close to having filled the 30 seconds. And seeing no one call in, we will go ahead and close. Oh, there's the phone. All right. You know, they were just helping with that buffer of a few more seconds. So we will now close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova?
So I don't propose that we, that we not participate. What I would like to motion for the council to consider would be that staff take this back again and that they get the answers and that they can paint a better picture for us and bring it back for a third time. We have time on this. And so it's in no way, again, me saying that the county can't do it or shouldn't do it. I just, I'm not seeing the reason for the investment. And I'm also not seeing that staff is completely well-versed on the items. And so I would like to see it come back with more answers.
Do we have a second on that motion? Seeing none, that motion fails and I will entertain another motion. Councilmember Ball?
I'll make a motion to accept or adopt Resolution Number 64085, parentheses 22, authorizing participation in a memorandum of understanding with the county of Santa Barbara, the cities of Beelton, Carpinteria, Galita, Santa Barbara, and Solvang, to share the costs of the development and implementation of the Santa Barbara County Regional SB 1383 Food Recovery Plan.
Okay, and do I have a second on that? I will give you your second. All right, so a motion, a second, any questions on that? All right, seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for one. All right, item number nine is new business. Adoption of Resolution Number 6491 and 6492 relating to funding for capital improvements to the solid waste landfill required by the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Board, Control Board. Adoption of Resolution Number 649322 reinstating the fifth annual solid waste rate adjustment approved by the city council on June 3rd, 2014 and deferred in 2018. Approval of agreement with KNN Public Finance for Financial Advisor Services for the solid waste utilities landfill capital financing and introduction and status report on the city's solid waste rate study. And we have Christine Dolly to make the presentation on this item.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor, citizens, staff. So we're going to be talking about the solid waste utility, specifically the landfill project and funding for it. The staff report's pretty long, but I think that we're going to be able to get this broken down into some pretty straightforward steps. So to start with, the big picture. We have a substantial project at the landfill that's required as soon as possible. That's the take-home point here. When I say substantial, I mean $5 million. And because of that, we're going to need to issue debt in the form of a bond. That does take some time. And so we have, we are going to propose a stopgap of an internal loan. And we have a long-term plan to pay back the $5 million bond. I'm going to start by asking Keith Quinlan to come up, our solid waste superintendent. He's going to go over this project and just the basics of what it covers.
Good evening, Keith Quinlan, Solid Waste. I wanted to briefly discuss the landfill stormwater improvements project. The first picture up here is a view of the landfill from the northeast looking to the southwest. One thing to note in this picture are the hills above the landfill and the amount of stormwater potentially that can run through the landfill. The second photo is a view looking, it's from the southeast and it's looking northwest. This is from the top of the landfill and gives you a view of again drainage or stormwater requirements that we would have to, that we're going to have to manage and work with. The next photo is our upper drainage basin on the landfill. And the photo on the right is the outfall area at the landfill. And this is where a sampling is taken when we do have a discharge from the landfill. Next photo, a couple erosion pictures. And this is problematic. This is one of the reasons that we have to implement stormwater improvements. The Central Coast Regional Water Board informs us that landfill is responsible for any stormwater that comes in contact with the landfill or the working industrial area of the landfill. And this is a large area that we would be responsible for. And regional water requires the landfill to be in compliance with the waste discharge requirements, our WDRs, and MRP, which is the Monitoring and Reporting Program, and 100-year 24-hour storm event. We have been issued an NOV. And this is an unfunded requirement, meaning requirements to become in compliance with the landfill and operating a landfill and coming in compliance with the waste discharge requirements. The existing site drainage conveyance structures are not adequately sized to handle the minimum requirement of the 100-year 24-hour storm event. The project would be to mitigate the stormwater runoff within the landfill and to divert the runoff from the watershed above the landfill, around the landfill, so it doesn't come in contact with the landfill. Thus, the landfill would not be responsible for that stormwater that does not touch the industrial area of the landfill. The treated, the treatment before discharge would be required. It's required now. And then once we have a discharge, we have to sample those. Our results have been extremely high for TSS in addition to some other areas as well. Recent update to the WDRs and the MRP will require the sampling and testing of additional constituents. The staff has been working on the project bid documents for some time and those are being finalized as we speak. And we are preparing those to go out to bid and to bring that to council for consideration of award of the project. At this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Christie to discuss the funding of the project.
Okay, so I'm the money person, so we're going to talk money. So this is, this is a required project. And it is something that we're already past the deadline on. It was, I believe it was January 31st, 2022, that, and we are, so we're currently subject to fines, but because we are making progress, we are not, we have not incurred any fines at this point. But we need to move on this. So the bond is a long-term debt issue. 30 years is what we're looking at. We are requesting up to three years to issue. Now, we don't expect that it's going to take three years to get this put together. Generally, it's three, three months, six months timeframe. But we have, legally, we can ask for up to three years. And given the current market environment, we want to go ahead and ask now that we could have up to three years to issue it. We do expect, however, that it would take less than that. For the bond, our key needs are, one, to specify, that the council would specify that any costs that we incur now until the bond is issued are reimbursable by the bond. We would also ask that you approve the city manager to sign an agreement with KNN, our financial advisor, to be able to do all the paperwork and put the bond issue together. We would ask that you would approve a stopgap internal loan for the short term. So until the bond is issued, that we would be able to use monies that we currently have from the electric fund as a short term. And talk a little bit more about that, the internal loan. It would be, again, a short-term stopgap, up to $5 million from the electric fund. Again, we wouldn't expect that we would have to use the full $5 million, given that we are looking to get the bond in less than three years. But the project is, I expect it to be up to $5 million. So we would ask that we would approve up to $5 million for the loan. We would put the rate at 0.599% annually, and that is based upon the Cal recycle rate that we currently have with, with solid waste. The internal loan would be paid back upon receipt of the bond proceeds. And this is just some, some terminology so that you understand that the city intends and reasonably expects to finance the costs of the project with long-term debt issuance. We're not expecting the short-term loan to become a long-term loan. So I think that this is where we, this is a question on all of our minds. How do we pay for this? And before we really go into the details of how we pay for the $5 million landfill project, I want to point out that solid waste utility rates are increasing everywhere, even without a, a project like this. This slide was put together by the League of California Cities. You can't see the blue very well on that first one, but there's a little piece that is light blue. That's the number of people that said that they don't expect, or the cities that don't expect to have a rate increase. All the rest expect a rate increase within three years. This was, the survey was taken in 2020. The middle slide, I think, is the most telling. It shows that over 50% of cities anticipate a rate increase greater than 10%. And that is without a $5 million landfill project. This is primarily due to SB 1383, as well as, on the right side, it lists other factors as well. Also, without the landfill project, our solid waste utility is running a deficit. You can see, this, this is a slide that I, I used a couple council meetings ago to show that solid waste in this, in fiscal year 2021 had revenues less than its expenses. We're also running a definite, net position in deficit of by $1 million. So staff is proposing a multi-step solution. For the long term, we are currently undergoing a comprehensive cost of services and Prop 218 rate study. We expect to report on this rate study this summer. In the meantime, however, we want to bring back to council something that passed in 2014. There was a 3.6% multi-year rate increase that was passed and approved by council to be implemented over five years. The Prop 218 hearing has already been completed on this study. It was implemented for four of the five years. But the fifth year in 2018, the 3.6% was deferred. That equated to about $250,000 a year for four years, which interestingly equals $1 million of forgone revenue. I'd like to point out, the $1 million is what we are behind in our net position. And, and so it's important for us to recognize that when we hire consultants to help us with these rate studies, they are doing an exhaustive, exhaustive study. And what they are recommending, it, it proves out, as we can see here. So our ask related to the 3.6% is that we would reinstate this piece of the rate increase now, effective July 1st. I want to make it clear, though, that this 3.6% only addresses the needs that were as of 2014 and the current deficit trend. It doesn't touch on this $5 million landfill project. That is going to be in the comprehensive rate study that we bring back in the summer. It isn't going to increase the, the increased cost due to SB 1383, or increasing unfunded liabilities, and any new needs identified since 2014. And there are a plethora of those listed out in the staff report for your reading pleasure. So just to recap, we have four things we're asking tonight. One would be a resolution to specify that the costs incurred now until the bond is issued, plus 60 days ago, are reimbursable by the bond proceeds. We ask that council approve the city manager to sign an agreement with KNN. They, they are, we, we have used them in the past, and they are set and ready to go with helping us with this bond issue. Third would be to approve a resolution for a short-term internal loan from the electric fund, up to $5 million. And finally, approve a resolution to affirm a 3.6% rate increase that was previously deferred. And that is my presentation.
I will say you've improved on Mr. Albro's stick figure. Councilmember Starbuck.
Several questions. How much life is left in the landfill? How many years do we still have?
That's an extremely difficult question to answer. Anecdotally, we've seen numbers ranging from 10 to 20 years. Staff is working on putting an RFP out on the street for the next phase study for the landfill to determine feasibility and, and have life closure.
Okay, well, if we've got that, but we're asking for a 30-year bond, if we don't have a landfill, what are we going to use to pay the last 10 years? The rates that we incur at that point, it just rolls over for 10 years while we go dump and send them where his new landfill?
Sure, and I'll ultimately defer to our finance director. But, but I do want to point out, there will be carrying costs for the landfill for generations, regardless of what happens tonight.
Yeah. So what we're talking about there is we still currently maintain a landfill closure fund. Do we know a balance on what that is, or how we supplement that fund? I mean, we don't, obviously, we don't have enough to make-
I read everything, I don't know it off the top of my head.
We just don't have enough money in there to make an, an internal loan to ourselves in the closure-
We, we aren't allowed to do that. We, we are not allowed to do that by, by law. We need to keep that money set aside for the landfill closure.
Okay, I thought that maybe we had borrowed against it before or something, but I'm not sure.
I am not aware of that, but I, I, I don't believe that that has occurred. We, we need to hold that money aside.
Basically, the enterprise cannot support itself by law.
It, it cannot use the closure, post-closure funding that is restricted for that to fund something else.
Okay. Let me ask, how's our methane collection system working out for us? We're, we're paying, we, we took out a loan on $1.4 million on this, so how's that working? Is it a, are we getting our money's worth as, as a city here?
Councilmember Starbuck, I'm not sure what you mean by get your money's worth. The system is up and running, it is functioning, and it is complying with the laws. So it continuously burns the methane generated from the waste underneath the landfill on a daily basis. So it is in compliance with the laws.
I, I guess the question here is, what additional cost did we incur by the mandate other than the $1.4 million to install it and stumble around up there around it? We now, obviously, are having to pay it. What, just, that was a small loan compared to what you're asking for now. I'm just curious what we're, you know, is that why we're behind here?
I think that Christie touched on why, why we're behind the, the 3.6% increase in 2018 that was not affirmed, brought us back a million dollars.
Right, but also brought up is the fact that back then, we didn't have to pay for a methane system. So I'm going to call it a wash on that regard.
Sure, Councilmember Starbuck, you, you bring up a great point. And I think it's important to also clarify that as years and decades roll on, the compliance requirements for operating a landfill have only become more stringent. Hence the reason why we're looking at developing this project now. So that, is that to say in the future, there, there will be even more requirements? I, I would bet that to be the case. And, and the cost for operating the landfill will continue to increase as a result.
You know, my curiosity's piqued with this because of, all of a sudden, we had to do a methane collection. Now, we have to do stormwater runoff collection. I'm curious what environmental action we're going to have to take next that is around the corner. Is there anything that you're aware of coming up, other than food separation and, you know, everything else?
Right, reading the tea leaves is kind of a, a difficult thing to do because as, as we study the environment and more and more data points and information become available, we understand kind of the environmental impact of certain constituents in the landfill that we need to monitor, address, and possibly treat for. So I realize that's a convoluted answer, but I, I don't think anybody could suggest that we're going to stay the status quo. I think the writing's on the wall that it's only going to become more stringent going forward.
Yeah. You know, I guess, another question is, at, at some point, would it be cheaper to just close the landfill?
I, I think that that's a very important policy discussion that at some point in the future will be before the council to consider, along with a myriad of recommendations from staff about how to proceed. But to that point, that's why it's very important that we, we get the next phase study at the landfill out on the street and get a consultant in here to help us identify exactly what our weak points and choke points are so that we can make some informed decisions about where we go next.
Yeah, I, it's, it's just, all of a sudden, you know, as a full-service city, you can't afford to be a full-service city in this. It's, I'm afraid if we get to the point of no return with it. So basically, affecting the owners of the landfill, the citizens here, what are we looking at, a $1.55 rate increase to be reestablished with, you know, the adoption of Resolution 649322?
So if you look at, we've got a handout, an attachment. This was the original rate increase that was approved in 2014.
Right.
Here, and the rates, there, there's several different ones. So you can look at, at the, the effective July 1, 2018, is what we're proposing. So on page one, three, five, I believe, and, and then the last page of the landfill disposal fees. I'm not, there were several different fees, so I'm not sure which one specifically you're asking about.
Okay, but I mean, these are all based upon the waiving of the last rate increase in '14.
That, that is the 2018.
We want to reinstitute that in, and then our 218 study now will come in this summer and will recommend new rate increases.
Correct.
So.
Correct, and, and the, the new rate increases are what we are going to be proposing to address the $5 million, as well as 1383 and all of the larger items that weren't identified in 2014.
Now, the bond is for the project-
Correct.
-that you want to do. What, your last slide up here showed, you want to go retro 60 days with what this bond is. What is that to cover? What did we do 60 days ago that we're going to try and include in the bond?
Well, it is, it is just a, a, really a technicality. So we are allowed to include any costs that the landfill has incurred in starting this project. They have already begun some of the discussions with engineering and, and some of the prep work, from what I understand. And so any of the costs related to that within the last 60 days are, are allowed, if you so choose, to be able to be covered by the bond, by the terms of, of that.
Okay, not knowing the numbers, but you're the numbers lady. Let me ask you a question. In this bond, would it behoove us to finance enough to pay off the methane system? Could we get a lower interest rate, pay off the methane collection loan?
I couldn't answer that one.
Okay.
That, that's on an SRF loan, and it's, it's super low.
Super low, so it's not worth it, not, not worth looking at. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Christie, as we're looking here for the rate increases of the 3.6%, it looks like that would have covered our $1 million deficit at the time. Is that correct?
That is what we are suggesting, yes.
According to the staff report, it's kind of like doing that. So if you were to multiply, times five, I don't know if that's fair, the $5 million bond, because it's going to be a little bit more, I think. We're looking at a rate increase probably, probably at least three times that, correct?
Um, I, I can't speak to what the final rate increase is going to be. However, I am trying to get back to the slide that, it's one more here. What I would point to you is the anticipated rate increase by cities that over 50% of the cities expect a rate increase greater than 10%. And that is without a $5 million landfill project. So I think that it is, it would behoove us to be prepared for, for a larger number.
Gotcha, and a lot of this is because of state mandates. It sounds like, you know, when you're looking at a staff report, because of, back in the day with the refunding bonds and whatever, there were monies that were found that were offset any need to have that increase back in the day, it sounds like, okay, from what we're looking at. So it wasn't like a, a bad decision. It looks like there was money that was saved interest-wise to the ratepayers back in the day. And all of a sudden now, costs have increased again to where we have a $1 million deficit in our operations. I mean, would you think that's correct, according to the staff report? If we're looking back in arrears at 2014?
Right, so in 2014, the, the rate studies told us, or suggested to us, that we should increase 3.6% every year for five years. And we did that for four years, and then on the fifth year, we, the council deferred. There were other factors involved. However, the fact remains that we are currently a million behind on, in the solid waste fund. That's a rounded number.
Gotcha.
And, and the anticipated, expected amount that we would have received had that 3.6 been implemented in the fifth year is about $1 million.
So the 3.6% is only one year of that previous-
It's four years.
-a resolution, is that correct?
It's one year of a rate increase over 2018, 19, 20, and 21 collections.
But we didn't do it-
We didn't do it in '18, so we didn't receive that money for those four years.
So we're really, are we still talking about one year, or are we still talking about several years for that 3.6%?
We would just start it, we would start it July 1st.
So you're talking about one year increase of 3.6% or four years?
We would increase it 3.6% moving forward. So one time, moving forward, and then we will come back with a Prop 218 full study in the summer to propose a, a final number.
Thanks for clarifying that. I just want to make sure it was clear that it was for one year, moving forward. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are, we are-
And you're, you're subject to another rate study based on the $5 million or whatever you're doing.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Just for clarification for the public, so, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Ball.
Okay, so bear with me, please, staff. I know this is a big issue at the, at the landfill. I know this is a big issue at the landfill. I also know the reasons why we need to do it and some people disagree with state mandates. Look, we could argue about it, but essentially, this is making sure that in the event there's a big storm, big storm, lots of water, everyone knows it has to go somewhere, do we want that water to go running through the landfill, getting all the chemicals or anything that's just in there and then just dumping it into the street, which goes into wastewater, which creates an issue? So what we're trying to do is mitigate, making sure that the worst parts of the landfill don't wind up in our wastewater plant, from what I understand. We've got to mitigate some water coming down the mountains, is that what I understand?
Councilmember, the stormwater from the landfill, we have to be worried about the creeks, the V Street Channel, adjacent properties. So when we get a large storm, we have to worry about managing that stormwater in such a way so that it doesn't affect the waters of the US, including Megalito Creek and then the ocean. This water would not be associated with the wastewater plant.
Thank you, that's a good reminder, because the main issue here is, maybe not that, but we don't want that water going through the dump and then leaching into the water that we actually need to suck up so that we can have good drinking water, is that correct?
That's correct as well.
So there's a good reason for doing this, from my perspective, because I'm relatively new here and again, there's no pressure on the current staff that we have, because we've had a lot of turnover and lost a lot of people and there's new faces and such. But Christie, you mentioned that this needs to be done as soon as possible. As I go back and look, this was brought up to council, this notice of violation started in 2018 and then came up again in 2020. Now, I know we're behind the curve here, but I think, having a little bit of hindsight, helping me understand a little hindsight for council will help us avoid making those critical decisions where we don't do the right thing. We don't have enough revenue to take on an unfunded challenge that does appear, so I was curious if you have any words.
Right, your timeline is accurate. There's many reasons that the compliance period has been protracted. This has been a very difficult project to get off the ground. It's been, and then about the time we were ready to move forward with the project, the pandemic hit, which I know that that's an excuse everybody is getting tired of hearing, but it is realistic and applicable to this situation. I think the important and silver lining to all of this is that the Water Board has been very cooperative and collaborative and they understand that we, up until now, have had a lot of challenges with funding. So we've been working with them very, very closely to avoid the minimum penalties, which so far, they have been gracious enough to not levy against us. However, the state Water Board staff has made it very clear their patience is wearing thin.
I was going to ask you about when does that grace start to run out? And to that point, and people in the public need to understand, when we make a decision to say, ah, it's not important, let's just defer it, we'll deal with it later, the state, whether we like it or not, has the right to come in and say, we're going to fine you, we're going to fine you, every single day that you don't do the right thing. So then we have to play catch-up. So in the worst-case scenario, what could the state, whoever's in charge, what could they fine us?
Right now, under statutory authority, $5,000 per day per violation.
$5,000 per day per violation. We can argue about politics, whether the state's doing the right thing, that doesn't matter here. They have the right to take taxpayers' dollars as a fine. We don't get anything for that, we just pay a fine. So it is really, really important for us to take, you know, when it comes to rate studies, when it comes to taking care of infrastructure, no one in government should assume that costs never go up, it always goes up. So as we move forward into the future, we've got to be conscious of, look, we had it going in the right direction and in 2018, they made a decision to say, yeah, let's defer it. Here we go, four or five years later, we're a million dollars in deficit, just in that one area. And that doesn't, it doesn't even cover the new costs that we have coming on us. So it really sucks to be up here and to have to deal with some of these harsh, hard decisions. And look, I'll be honest with the public, I'm not going to pull the wool over your eyes, the rates here are going to go up. The job for council is to figure out how to make, how to land it as softly as possible, how to make sure that we figure out what those numbers are and we sustain it and that we offer consistent, sustained, good service. So I'm frustrated that we are so far behind, we're talking about catching up to a standard and to deal with the problems that were addressed in 2014. That's just catching us up to there and we're in 2022. So again, I just wanted everyone to maybe consider the magnitude of some of these challenges. And when we do talk about rates, remember the devil's in the details. Don't just say, ah, they're raising rates again. No, they're going back to raise the rates that was already approved for 2018 that was deferred, four years later. So let's be very clear about that. And I know it's going to be a contentious discussion on rates moving forward, but let's keep the big picture and hopefully in 10, 20 years, we don't land in this position again, having to deal with something as big as this with this big of a price tag, with no, no solid plan, other than borrow money from ourselves, so. That wasn't really a question, but thank you.
Sure, and also, if I may add, just to put a finer point on it, the expedited timeline is so that we can attempt to comply by the end of the year. Building out this project is, does not bring us into compliance. There are many other tasks that have to be completed after project construction to satisfy the requirements listed in the NOV. The endeavor right now is to complete all those tasks by the end of the year, but as you can see, here we are in the middle of April, that doesn't give us a lot of time between now and then to get this project done.
Is there, what is the contingency plan if the estimate of $5 million is exceeded?
I will defer to our finance person on that.
The $5 million right now, it has, there is a contingency built in, that number. So I am confident that the $5 million won't be exceeded. Now, is that, is it possible? It is. And if that happens, then we will have to look at an internal loan or look at other, or extending it and coming back to council with additional requests.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, given that timeline and not just cost of services, but cost of goods and the impact everything's having on so many industries, it has me a little concerned.
And that is, that is absolutely correct. We did build a contingency into this and so I think that it is a reasonable number and that we're not going to exceed it.
But you have considered any, anything that goes awry and how we might address it and have a plan to bring it back to us?
Correct.
Okay. Any more questions for staff before we go to public comment? Seeing none, thank you all. We will open the floor for public comment on item number nine. You're more than welcome to call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium and you will have three minutes to speak on this. Madam Clerk, did we receive any written communications?
No ma'am, nothing.
Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. You will have three minutes to speak on the item, whether you're in person or on the I don't have any entertaining anecdotes from the State of the City to tell you, other than we processed a lot of wastewater and biodegradables and the numbers were very, very large. I did not memorize them, but if you wish to watch the State of the City, it is up on our city website YouTube page and I encourage you to take an hour and entertain yourself with the State of the City. The staff did a very good job of providing lots of information that I tried to convey and I do know that it was a lot of positive things for a change. All right, seeing no one call in and no one step to the podium, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. And I will say that, taking into consideration Councilmember Starbucks' frustration about costs going up and as a full-service city, the frustration of trying to deliver those things, one of the things that has come up often in discussion recently while I was in DC for the Northern California Power Agency Federal Policy, is the fact that because we own our own electrical, we have been able to control costs because those discussions happen here. And you, as residents and businesses, can come and speak to us directly and we can hear what the impacts are and we can choose to make decisions, even if they, in hindsight, cause a deficit of a million dollars, do have local control. And that doesn't happen for individuals that are in contract cities, where the contracts are written for waste management or water services or electrical. They're at the mercy of those private companies that are investor-owned. And I think that there is some advantage, even though it is difficult and it is costly and we have state mandates that are unfunded, I think there is still some level of benefit to our community that we actually do control those entities and can have the discussion locally. So they're difficult, they're difficult decisions and they do impact each and every one of us, but it is a very different conversation than when you are a contract city and everything is just a bill that gets handed to you, so. I'll bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. I know no one wants to make it, Councilmember Starbucks.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move staff recommendations.
And I will, Councilmember Cordova.
Second.
Awesome, we have a motion and a second. Any additional questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. We will now go to written communications. Do we have any additional written communications we haven't discussed?
Nothing ma'am.
Nothing, all right. Now we will go back to consent calendar item number four, which was polled, which is Lompoc Tourism Improvement District 2020 and 2021 Annual Reports by Visit Lompoc Incorporated. As a result of this becoming a discussion, does Councilmember Cordova need to step down from the dais and?
Yes.
Part the room?
Yes.
All right. Yes, we will call you back when we are done. Thank you so very much.
Don't go far. I wanted to pull this, hurry up.
Give her a chance, you're the one who pulled it, so.
Well, I wanted to make this short, but the reason that I pulled this item is, it, I also kept the original Tourism Improvement District Management Agreement and the reporting that was required in the initial Improvement District Management Agreement isn't aligned with what's in the staff report. Now, I know the council has not received the Tourism Improvement District, this is an old document from 2013, but it's relevant because that's what we're voting on here, which I don't want to go into particulars on the whole thing, but maybe you could enlighten us. I'd like to really table this and come back with something here that would be aligned with the original agreement.
Didn't we do an updated agreement in the end of '27 or 2018? We had a new agreement come forward that we agreed on that covered 10 years instead of three or five and there was new information in that, so.
If you wanted to, we could research that and bring it back another night.
Well, I just know that we did have a new agreement, it came forward and we voted on it prior to Councilmember Cordova joining us. And so it may have had the new reporting standards and this may be reflective of that because we did have a new.
I'd like to see that one then also, because I didn't keep that one. This one requires much more detail than what we're showing in here. As a matter of fact, I will literally hand this to somebody with some little marks in it, but.
We can research it and find that information and we can bring it back if that's what you'd like.
Yeah, and if there was a, you know, I guess part of this is if the council would agree to table this a little bit, while I would love to sit down with Mr. Adams here and yourself and if there was a, you know, we could provide all that information to council. And if there is a new agreement, I'd think that every one of us here should be in receipt of that also, because to go through and just say, oh, okay, sure, this is happening, but I seem to remember different.
Yeah, I think staff would really need to look at that agreement and see what is missing and maybe even reach out to explore Lompoc, yeah.
Councilmember Ball.
No, I just wanted to confirm, I read through all of it and somewhere in there, it did say in 2018 that it was a new agreement extended for 10 years, is what I remember, so expiring 2028, so 2018 is the number.
This may be referring to the T-Bid aspect of that we will continue to be the pass-through agency on this, but the specifics for reporting are not included in this. So, you know, I'm sure Mr. Adams, you know, he's new, he has not seen a lot of these here, you know, I mean.
Mr. Adams, why don't you come to the dais and share any information you would like with us regarding this concern?
Not a problem. I do remember seeing when I was going through with the staff report and preparing everything, there was a resolution that was passed in 2018, or a new agreement rather, that set this up so that we would have different reporting on it. To my knowledge, the previous, the last year's, there's two reports on there. The last year's report was missed because of staff turnover and that the baton was never picked up by the next office, so when I picked it up, I got two, I did two years on it. But the agreement that I do remember seeing started in 2018, extended, like she said, another 10 years. I don't know, I haven't seen this agreement, so I'm not sure the reporting differences between the older agreement and the new one.
I guess the question here, Mr. Adams, would be, was the 2018 resolution to extend the T-Bid for 10 years or was it to change the reporting requirements?
I believe it was just to extend it.
That's what I'm recalling on that, but the reporting requirements are listed in the original agreement that Ms. Donnelly has here.
And I was not provided that early on, I apologize.
I guess rather than vote on something that could affect things that are happening on the dais here, I would really just make a motion that we table this and allow staff to do a little bit further investigation on it and bring it back. It's a little bit more important than just a consent item, I think, at this point.
Does this impact any of our deliverables to delay the report being filed?
It shouldn't.
That's, just wanted to make sure we weren't missing any sort of deadline, since we had missed one for an entire year.
Well, it does, it won't, because we've already done that with these.
But I think it's important that the community understand that we're not causing additional problems by delaying this and making sure it is accurate, so I appreciate that. Any other questions before we move forward? All right, second on Councilmember Starbucks' motion?
I'll second.
We already opened the floor for public comment on consent calendar before you pulled it, so we don't have to go back and do public comment on it, because it was part of the earlier. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that is 4-0 with one in absentia. All right, Councilmember Cordova, if you can hear my voice, you're welcome to come back to council and we'll give you the time to get back. Councilmember Vega, would you mind knocking on the door? It is sound barrier, that's good to know, she can't hear anything, she went into the cone of silence. All right, we will now bring it back to the final oral communications for the evening. You have two minutes to speak on city council matters, whether it was something on the agenda already or upcoming. You may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. If you'd like to speak, you may come to the microphone and you have two minutes.
My name is, my name is Scott Burns, I'm representing Donate Life and I got stuck in traffic, so I apologize.
Here is your proclamation.
Thank you.
Please speak to the public about it.
I will, I will only do it in 45 seconds, I apologize.
You can have your full two minutes, please.
Anyway, I received a kidney transplant in 2015, I was at, on a friend's sailboat in Santa Cruz Island, Santa Barbara Harbor Patrol came by and said, mister- in Santa Cruz Island, Santa Barbara Harbor Patrol came by and said, "Mr. Burns, we have a kidney for you." I ended up getting a boat ride home and driving down with my wife to Cedar Sinai Hospital. The next morning, I had a fully functioning kidney, which I could say is I could urinate well, it's a nice way for it, but that's only part of the story. The lady who died suddenly was a nurse at Cottage Hospital, Vivian Patel, she collapsed in the gym, they thought it was a stroke, it turned out to be a brain aneurysm. Not only did I receive a kidney, uh, she also was able to donate, uh, her heart, her lungs, her liver, and the other kidneys. A lot of people lived because of, while she died. So, I have gotten to meet her family, and we do appreciate, I appreciate her, and I, because of that, I am here, I'm talking to most every city in the county, actually every city in the county, and the county itself, to just thank everyone for the proclamation. This proclamation will end up at the Lompoc DMV, it'll first go to a, right, uh, event in Los Angeles, uh, where it'll be shown, and then it'll be on the wall at the DMV. We like, uh, everyone to put the pink dot on their driver's license. The last study showed 95% of the people want to be an organ donor, or say they're in favor of it, but only 55% actually do the pink dot. It also turns out that you're three times as likely about to need an organ transplant than you are actually to be donating an organ. So, we really like that, we appreciate, uh, what you guys do, we appreciate the proclamation, I appreciate you guys letting me sneak in late, uh, and I enjoyed listening to your presentation through the council meeting.
Well, we thank you for staying through the entirety of our meeting and, and, and receiving it, so have a safe drive home and congratulations, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one call in and no one else come to the podium, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council for comments and meeting reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Ball.
Okay, just a couple of quick things, uh, I was honored to just be able to step in and help out, uh, the several local folks here that have been putting on the Every 15 Minutes campaign. If you don't know what that is, it's, uh, they, every other year, they switch high schools between Cabrillo and Lompoc, but they reenact and recreate a horrific, uh, crash scene, so, and they bring all the kids out so they can see the impacts and the consequences of driving under the influence and/or reckless driving, and it's very impactful, and, in asmuch as it takes, it gets the families involved, it's, gets the mortuary involved, it gets the hospital involved, um, and it, I, I'm just really proud of our community for stepping up and trying to, to make an impact on our young people who always don't have something to do and sometimes can get into trouble, so, um, I hope a lot of people were influenced by that. And I want to give a very special shout-out to our local police and fire department, uh, I think there was at least four or five, if not many more, fire fighters there from Lompoc Fire Department and the police department. I, I got to meet some people that I hadn't even met yet in the, in the department, so that was, it was really wonderful. We're really, really fortunate to have some excellent employees, um, that were willing to step up and help out to, to impact our community in a positive way. Um, and then I just want to come in, it sounds like I didn't get a chance to attend it, but the last Parks and Rec Commission meeting was, uh, was well-attended, several people showed up. So, I know there's a lot of conversation throughout the community about what we should and can or might do about our parks, so I'm, I'm proud of our citizens showing up at that commission meeting. We're, as, I, we as a council are depending upon some of these commissions to give us some feedback, so I encourage the community to stay engaged, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega?
I'd just like to, um, mention to the public again, we, we would really appreciate more, uh, attendance and support here for some of the commission meetings. There are some openings still on some of the commissions, and, uh, we do need your help and support, it's hard to make decisions without having your input. So, anybody that's, anyone that's interested, uh, please come in and put an application, contact any one of us, or contact the city clerk for an application. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilmember Cordova?
I have two council requests. In the last meeting, we discussed, um, the, or the sta, or the council adopted or accepted the appropriations for 2.5 million for the radio network replacement, and during that meeting, we discussed the need for the radios, especially to public safety, that being the main priority because they're so outdated, but there was something that, um, kind of struck me during that meeting when we talked about, um, the body cameras and why that didn't make it to the list of priorities, um, when we were, um, approving all the purchases that were going to be distributed throughout the departments. This, uh, body cameras obviously being for public safety police. Um, so I went back and I pulled the agenda item where we had discussed it, because I know that was one of the items that we had looked at before, and as I studied that particular agenda, I realized that in 2013, we discussed purchasing body-worn cameras, obviously, I was not on council at that time. It was discussed again in 2015, it was discussed again in 2020, twice, and every time, we kept saying, "We're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it", and yet, we haven't done it. And, I feel like we had the opportunity, I know that during, uh, our last meeting, there was discussion about a potential grant, and that's all fine and dandy, but when I pulled the agenda, one of the things that stuck out to me was, in the staff report, it said that, um, the police department has the watch guard equipment, which was, which was installed in police vehicles, and, um, but at that time, it was also reported that it was at end of life, and if we're talking 2020, and it said specifically, um, "No longer to be supported by watch guard at the end of this year". I remember asking for an update on this, and we never received it, so, I would like the council to please consider, um, approving my council request to get an update on this. Um, if we don't have the watch guard equipment, and it's already, um, gone away, or we are no longer, um, being supported on it, and it's no longer being used, I think the public has the right to know, and I think that we should have a healthy discussion as to, um, when we can get these body cameras, because it is something that we have been telling the public for many years, that we will make a conscious effort to do, and it seems like we keep failing.
Councilmember Ball?
I'll give her a second.
Councilmember Starbuck?
No, I'll give you a third also on a...
Thank you, I appreciate the support. Um, the other item, and this is very concerning for me, because I see it happening again and again, whether we're talking $11,000 or $2.5 million, my issue is always, do we have all the information in front of us? And it's not that I question whether staff is doing what they're supposed to be doing, it's just that I think we have the right to know what the process is. And so, we approved the $2.5 million for the radio network replacement, I think it's a big-ticket item, I would love for council to approve, um, my request, that this be brought back to the council with bids, so that we can actually see the bids, and we can, um, be aware of what company we're going with, and get a little bit of information and education at least, as to the functionality, the quality, the, um, you know, the expertise of, of, of all these, um, purchases that are going to be able to be made, because the, the network, the radio replacement, this is a huge item, and I think that the council needs to know, and I think that the public has the right to know.
So, are you looking for it to come back before they make a decision, or are you looking for, once the decision's made, to have a, a, a report on what's being delivered and when, and, and, kind of like when we got, when we, we, we approved the purchase of the fire truck, but we didn't participate in approving which bid we took, but once it was received, we were given the opportunity to see the equipment, understand it, and, and do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking for it to please come back to council prior to making the decision. A fire truck is very specific, um, a, a radio network replacement project, we've seen, and Councilmember Starbuck discussed, and he's pointed it out many times, about our, um, internet, um, throughout, you know, the city, and, and I feel that this is something that really needs to come back to council before we make the actual purchase, so that we're educated on it.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Just, one question about this, Councilwoman Cordova, is, this was a phased replacement. Do we want to just go through the first phase of it, the initial procurement, or, kind of narrow it down?
Um, I'd like to, yeah, and, and this is what scares me, because I'd like to see the procurement aspect of it, I'd like to see that we actually do get a minimum of two to three bids on this, and that we're able to see and make sure that we're rating this equipment apples for apples, and, and, and that we can learn what it's going to do in our city and within our department structures. So, I'd like to see that. I would also love to see the actual, um, uh, infrastructure replacement throughout the city. I, I, I'm a very detailed kind of person, and I would love to be able to see that phase of it as well.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm kind of waiting on staff to say something here. Uh, I mean, I support it, but I, I, you know, financially, and then the material aspect of it, I mean, what, what would you like for, you know, I'm, I'm going to support you on this, but I, I want to narrow it down for staff, was, you want to do the financials and the biddings, I'm sure the public safety will have a separate report over what the radio people are going to have, um, what would you recommend that, that we do?
I would say that you can be assured that we do have a robust procurement process, that we do take bids and go through that process. To be able to come back and present that to you before we award it, there are many, um, qualifications that need to be met, and I don't, I am not the procurement expert. I believe that we could do that, but it would take additional staff time to bring that forward. What we often do is present to you after the fact, where we've gone through the bidding process and we present, we, we evaluated these three, five bids, however many we get, and, and then tell you which ones were awarded based upon the rules that are established in procurement. So, my issue is this, um, and I understand that, um, there are particular guidelines you can say that are used when it comes to procurement, but this being technical and this being something, it's been 30 years since we purchased radios, and, and I really feel that the technicality of this purchase, being $2.5 million, I don't, I guess I don't understand, and it makes me feel uncomfortable, why are we so hesitant as a council to ask these questions and to, and to have this, it's just information that's going to be presented before us? Why does the public not have the right to know?
Chief Welch, uh, Lompoc Fire, Councilwoman, you have every right to have a demonstration by us, I know that when we, um, got the approval of funding for the new fire engine, I came and did a demonstration here of all the new features, um, for public safety and firefighter safety that that engine incorporates, and we'd be happy to come and speak to the function of the radio technology and how different it is from what we used at our last purchase, um, the quality of the radios, some are specific to the area here, and then another radio that we're asking for is specific to when we go on our wildland deployment, and it allows us to talk on, um, different frequencies with different agencies from not only in this state, but other states. And, and then the specifications, we'll tell you exactly why we want these radios and why we need them, and how they keep us safe and our public safe. So, that's easy for, for us and our public safety partners to come and do another demonstration as we move forward, at the date of your choosing.
Thank you, and I appreciate that support, because I think it's just, it's in the intricacies and, and the specifications, as, uh, Chief Welch just, just pointed out, that, um, this is a one-time purchase, that we all agreed, we're making this one-time purchase out of funds that we didn't have, so, once we buy these, we're stuck with these, probably for the next 30 years, and guess what? Probably Chief Welch won't be here, probably Chief Mariani won't be here, and probably none of us will be.
Mayor and council, we're, we're getting far, far into a discussion of an item that's not on the agenda, so this is a request for a purchase of certain equipment to come back to council to review, we can bring that back, it's not a problem.
And, and, and in support of Councilmember Cordova, I think at the same time, that, that report, we should find a way not to delay moving forward on a, on a successful bid, but inform us of why and what's coming, so I, let's find a balance.
That's what I understand the request to be, to bring back before the purchase is made, bids for the council to select who we will purchase from, according to the, the purchasing rules, and that's fine. We do that for items that, we do that all the time, for items that are above staff's purchasing limit, we can do that for items that are under the purchasing limit as well, if council requests, so, we can bring those purchases back before they're made.
So, I heard Councilmember Starbuck support it?
Yes, and, um, without going too deep into this, I mean, it is a phased plan, so, if you wanted to do a, a, a staff report on it, would you be willing to go beyond the bid and say, you know, "What did you select, what is, you know, the infrastructure requirements"? A little more detail is what you're looking for, I'll, I'll support you.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Ball?
Can I just, I just had a question for Councilwoman Cordova, is, is it fair to, you know, if I was to support this, is it fair that we're asking, you know, in some sort of general terms that, we're not, you're not necessarily looking to get the numbers or the bids to see what's the cheapest option, so, but to see, or to have council actually have a discussion on those critical choices of, maybe the cheapest option isn't the best, maybe a higher-priced option that has a longer life cycle, that is more sustainable. Again, I agree with Councilwoman Cordova, any sort of details that help us make a big picture, um, influence on some of these decisions, I think could be helpful. Is that fair, what you're looking for?
Yes, absolutely, I'm not looking to make the cheapest purchase, I'm making, I'm looking to make a sound decision, and like I said, whether it's a dollar or $2.5 million, I think it's important.
So, I'll give her a third.
All right. Thank you. So, I missed last meeting, so my list of things is, is long, so bear with me. I missed the last meeting because I am the city's representative with the Northern California Power Agency, and we had our federal policy conference in DC, and part of that is going not just to our representatives, but to the different departments, like the Department of Energy, the Department of Transportation, all of these different entities that have received funding in the last infrastructure bill, to speak about issues regarding our power sources. We own hydroelectric facilities, geothermal facilities, and a natural gas facility. We are part owners in that, and decisions and needs that we need to make, to make sure they maintain their functionality or extend into future life, are part of those infrastructure dollars, and we go to those organizations to advocate for us receiving some of those funds. So, we spent a week there doing just that, and, um, I think you'll begin to see some of the results, um, in the next year, and I will work on a report to bring forward and update the council on those, those appeals. Um, we have the county, the sheriff is working on, um, the opioid addiction issue, and has started a meeting regarding that, and I was able to attend that last month, and will attend this month as well, and as the project begins to, uh, develop and have solutions, it will come forward and be presented to us, so we have an opportunity to participate in that. Um, the standard meetings for the Air Pollution Control District, and the Santa Barbara County Area of Governments, and the regular meetings for NCPA, um, I, I attended all of those. Um, I also had the benefit of going out for the latest launch that was, um, really important for national security, and I want to thank, uh, Bill Stark for getting me as close as possible to that, uh, launch, it is pretty amazing to, um, experience it that up and close and personal, so I want to thank him for that. The first broadband community meeting, um, was held last week in Lompoc, and I want to thank, uh, this Assistant Superintendent Brevala, as well as Tommy Spedel with the YMCA, and to our librarian, Dominic Keane, for participating on that panel and really talking about the issues in our community, and the impact of not having, um, reliable, uh, fast internet, has had it on our seniors, on our low-income population, and our businesses, and, and all of those, and they all were excellent contributors to, to the, to that, so I want to thank them for giving their time. Um, I also attended several local events regarding the pinwheel for, um, awareness, the promotion of two of our officers in LPD, and, uh, was, uh, representing our community yesterday at Vandenberg Space, Air Force, uh, Vandenberg Space Force Base regarding the vice president's visit, and I just want to thank the base for coordinating that. And last but not least, if you get a chance to, Hapgood Elementary has a garden program, and it is really amazing... program and it is really amazing. The students are, um, have a small orchard, they are growing and composting their own food and they're, they're eating it in the local cafeteria and so they provided a program to show, uh, what they're doing and the, the kids really do understand where their food comes from. And I just want to thank CalFresh and the UC Extension Program for putting that program on and want to recognize those students and their parents for, for that dedication. Um, it was very impressive to see. Um, last but not least, a couple of things going on in the community. Youthwell.org is having several workshops regarding youth substance abuse and, um, human trafficking and keeping kids safe. If you go to Youthwell.org, they will have their free virtual events online that you can register and any of the ones they've already had are recorded and you can watch for free. I highly advise parents and, and, uh, kids that are interested in these topics to utilize that free resource. Communicify is having an economic empowerment program. It is a free, three-week virtual program to help you learn credit, budgeting, debit, and savings management skills. So, you can go to Communicify's website and sign up for those and they are two classes in English and one class in Spanish, um, over a three-week period in the evening. And then, we have a public hearing on May 3rd regarding our CDBG funds that will be allotted and go to some of our local nonprofits that we get awarded and manage. So, that is on our website. Please feel free to go look at those, provide feedback and input and participate in that public hearing on May 3rd and more information is on our website. And last but not least, we had a major outage as a result of P G N E's power line falling down and hitting one of our lines affecting nearly 44,000 customers. And I just want to say thank you to the electrical department for working so diligently to get that back up in a few hours. Um, if we had not had our own team, we probably wouldn't have seen it get back up and running so quickly. Um, some of you may be experiencing a few outages over the next few days. Those are planned and you have been notified of them, but if, if you experience it, again, don't hesitate to contact, um, our electrical department to find out what's going on or go to our website or, um, our social media pages. So, I just want to say, um, that I missed everybody and I missed not being here for the last meeting and I'm trying to make up for it evidently by continuing to talk. But I appreciate you all and I, uh, thank all of council. Um, it was the first time we've had a state of the city in person again in, in nearly three years and all of council met, uh, managed to attend it. And I want to thank all of staff for providing all of the great information about how much the community is improving and the steps we're making to have the kind of community we all want to be in it. So, thank you to all of you for doing such a good job. Uh, we will adjourn this meeting till the next meeting at 6:30 PM on May 3rd, 2022.